And just in case the light didn't get in on the, we called the meeting to order at 4:07. And I would also like to open up the public input period starting now for RSA 18974. Hold that for 30 minutes.
Yes, sir.
Probably ask that again in the next. All right, um, do we have any announcements?
So any board pack was the current year financial. There was some ups and downs expense wise, but since last month, we only added 738 dollars. And I did note what those ups and downs are. We did put the second round of requests into the trustee of test them. They did have an administration to lay on their side, so we can not receive the money yet. But they are going to back to us if there's any problems. So right now, the ending fund balance will be looking to be 79,670 with the extra sources of revenue rooted on for shipments. And I did put the manifest up there outside of anywhere behind your computer on the other side.
Two seconds.
That's all, so I get anything? Do you have some questions?
So, Mr. Chair, in April, this will be the time when we begin talking about items on the capital improvement list that we want to use unassigned fund balances for or expenditures. We're not going to be making any recommendations this year to use any unassigned fund balances.
All right.
So we wouldn't be bringing any force to the board this evening or next.
Okay.
So we expect to return the full unassigned fund balance to the tax payers.
But then this is just a projection because my time still have a little ways to go.
Right, could be more or less. Hopefully more.
All right, Superintendent.
Thank you. I have three items, two on here, and one that I wanted to come back and report on. So I believe it was last week that I was asked about gifted and talented legislation and how we followed through with that. So I did look into that before. So as you suspected, our principals at the beginning of each year, typically in the August time period, use what's called the IBAS, I-B-A-S, but used to be called the IBAS. Now it's the E-S-S, which is a digital system with Department of Education. And they have to answer specific questions for several areas, one of which is the gifted and talented area. So all of our principals did do that, including East Hanks Elementary School, Principal French, to confirm that. We also confirmed that with our database administrator, please Almaine Polier, from the SAU and Department of Education, so we verified that all of those were filed.
If a parent was to go on Guardians to go off the website, Department of Education website, would they be able to read what we listed for those programs?
I don't know if they would be able to have access to that. Most of, if not all of our programs report that we don't have separate gifted and talented programs. So it's not a separate standalone program, so they would be hardly hard to find that. If we did, it would most likely be on our home website. But so I think our principals, they have, if we don't have a program, they have to report that as well. If that's what our principals did report, they applied the requirement to say we don't have gifted and talented programs. Sure. I would recommend if any parents are interested in gifted and talented, to reach out to principals. Sure, to reach out to their principal, you know, Mr. French or other communities who are attending school in the cooperative, to see what exists for them at the school. If there's anything special for them, then maybe they'll leave a child should be.
Thank you.
Sure. The health insurance, GMR, we got a lovely note last week. If you recall, our fall projection that we received from Health Trust was 15.6% increase on our health insurance for next year, and that's how we had to budget. Last week, we received word from Health Trust that the actual guaranteed maximum rate is 10.6%. Still an increase, but it's a decrease of 5% from what was projected. So you'll see that in next year's budget as we work through the year, the savings there, because it was appropriated to us, but it's not necessarily something that we intend on spending. That's what the savings are. But I thought that would be a bright light in a rather tough budgeting time, so. My last item is, just to talk briefly about the general and federal assurances. We are required to provide these assurances each year back to the Department of Education. These are about how we spend federal grant dollars, Title I through Title IV grants, REIT grants, any other federally sponsored grant that comes through the Department of Education. The requirement is that we provide you with the documentation, give you the opportunity as a board to work through it. And then we have a sign off where the board chair and superintendent initial and sign each page of the assurances. And so this is an annual gift that we have for the chair each year, where you get to sign several pages. And so I have those for you here. What was in your packet is a copy of what we just wanted you to review. So I have them here. I'm going to bring them over, and in the meantime, if anyone has questions, they'll get to it. And so down at the bottom of each page, if you recall that.
Even on this letter, too?
No, not in the letter, sir. It's just on the spaces on the lower right, where it says initials, superintendent initials and board chair initials. And on the back, we've already signed, because you did already sign that. You stopped them now because you were able to do that. You'll see that signature on the very, very last page. One of the things I'll note with regard to the general assurances was last year, we audited our policy manual as they relate to what we're required to have under these guidelines. And so all of our policies that are required for federal assurances are now actually within all of our policy manuals, including East Hanks. So we're directly in line with what we're required to have. And no more of my report than that this evening. Well, this afternoon, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm not used to boards meeting in the afternoon.
All right, we got minutes from us. Session, you got it?
So I didn't see anything for the non-public meeting minutes, but I did catch a few things on the very other board meeting. Let's see, I have Dr. Ryan stated that this would not have to go back to the policy committee and can be done local. That goes in place of what was said there. A portion needs to be replaced with position. It was stated that this would be a court needs to be added if, after the question of two board members, they actually need a middle meeting. And then a comment that was attributed to Mr. French was actually Dr. Ryan. He stated that there is a policy committee meeting tomorrow night. And then Tiffany DeBrio, not Dr. Ryan, stated that she, not he, was under the impression, pardon, of IHBAD policy. And that's all I have.
Yeah, do you need better?
Well, Sharon, I think, watches the videos.
She does. She reviews them, and we make, she makes the adjustments in order to the minutes. So we should be good. Thank you, then.
To our principals' report.
So I'll make a motion to approve the March 15th board meeting minutes and our non-public meeting minutes as amended.
I'll second. On favor? All right.
Thank you. Just updating the board on our updated incoming kindergarten. We still have 20 that we have either registered or in the process of registration with Mrs. Hofmester. Our global numbers as of last Friday, we are still 130 students, 22 in kindergarten, 26 in first grade, 12 in second grade, 21 in third grade, 24 graders in 29th and fifth grade. We had an amazing weekend, two weekends ago, with our performances, Saturday, Friday, and Saturday, with Frozen Kids. For those that were in attendance, it got better and better with each day. The students worked, and worked, and worked, and worked, and worked. And they were so proud of, especially that Saturday performance and the feedback that they received and that our staff, who worked for many months with them, received, and that I received with community members, were so happy to be back, you know, here at school, watching our community event and bringing so many people into our building. So it was well attended every single night. And again, I just want to thank our kids and our theater team, staff team, for all who worked and went into it, because it was, it was a lot of three days. We had Tom Maguire, who we spoke about the last couple of board meetings here last week, for educating the whole child. Spent two full days here. And I'm excited about the report again, but just in conversation with him, meeting him for the first time, a great conversation about how awesome this school is and what we do here. And he got to experience it. He was in classrooms for much of the day with students, with staff, talking to staff in their downtime during their breaks, before school, after school. So it was wonderful two days, and it was so great to have someone come in who has a wealth of experience in education and who was able to come in and just see what we do and see what makes us so special. So as soon as we get his report, we will definitely share it with you and our community, because we were excited for people to read about what we do here. And it was just, you know, it's so great to get an outsider's perspective. Because I think we all think we do great, but to have someone who's experienced like him that can come in and just meet our kids and meet our staff, it was a great two days. What I'm going to ask you to do tonight is to approve our portion of the 23-24 calendar through conversations and meetings with SEU, 16 elementary principals, and then again with our staff here, just trying to figure out what fits best for our school as we look at our professional development days next year. I did send surveys out to our parents, guardians, and our staff, just wanting their feedback on either continuing with our once-a-month early release days or taking a look at the combo. And we had around 70% of our families and pretty close to that with our staff who wanted to move towards the combo. So I'm going to arrange you the dates that we're hoping for approval tonight for next year. We would have three full PD days. That would be on October 6th, 2023, January 12th, 2024, and March 29th, 2024. And those would all be Fridays, and the October day and the March day would be around holiday weekends. And then we would have three early release dates, December 22nd, 2023, April 12th, 2024, and June 11th, which would be the last day of school again, 2024.
Mr. French, are those half-days, early release days on Thursdays again?
The early release day on April 12th would be a Friday, 12/22, I'm not sure. It's the day before our holiday break. I'm not sure. I think that's a Friday as well.
On Friday night.
And then the June 11th day is not Friday. I don't know. It's the last day of school. But that could change if we ask for those.
Thank you.
22nd is Friday. Any other questions on those days?
Could you give me the three full PD days again? I got October 6th.
October 6th, January 12th, and March 29th.
So it'd be three full PD days and release days. How many early releases?
Three early release days.
And three is a P of four. And what do we have now? You said a half-day every month?
Yes, there's one month where we do not have a half-day. I don't remember what month that is. I'm not really used to saying.
And you said it was 70% for that option with families and?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact percent. It was close to 70 for both, yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the calendar as Principal French has proposed.
I'll second.
On favor? All right.
Thank you. And last, it's not really my presentation, but we have our school counselor, Paige Tull, here that is going to lead you through one of our Second Step lessons that our students cater. K-5 receives Second Step SEL curriculum once a month. Once a month, oh, sorry, two times a month, where she's in the classroom, working with all of our students, teaching lessons, having conversations. And we really wanted to give our community and our board just a small picture of how we intertwine DEIJ and SEL and make it fit a K-5 student population. And anything else you missed?
Nope, that's a great introduction.
Okay, so Paige is, you know, again, our school counselor. She's also, she's our lead for our school on our DEIJ team here, and she's also part of the district team this way.
Thank you. So yeah, I just wanted to take some time to show you what it looks like in our building and really focusing on grade five as an example, just over the past few months, the work that we've been doing. So if you don't mind looking for me. So I think it was around January, we started receiving a lot of just reports and students needing help with teasing, taunting, and some things that we were investigating as potential bullying. So because of this influx, I decided to, like Mr. French said, I usually do Second Step. That's the curriculum that I stick to, but I kind of went off that track a little bit to just specialize the experience for the students. So I read some books, as seen on the screen here, two great ones by Trudy Ludwig, and they're about, you know, bullying and what it might look like, teasing, taunting. We had a really just important discussion about the do's and don'ts of teasing and taunting, how to address them, and if you would go to the next slide, please. We looked at another book, also by the same author, called Confessions of a Former Bully, and talked about some strategies. So a lot of the things that were reported to us that students needed help with were, you know, comments that they didn't like, that made them feel uncomfortable or not valued or appreciated. And so we discussed being assertive, standing up and saying something, or, you know, turning around and perhaps making it into a joke, you know, to show that it didn't affect you. So we had a lot of discussion about, you know, the different strategies to try. And next slide, there's a little bit more. One of my favorites is, you know, agreeing with the person. So if, you know, someone calls you, the example in the book is someone calls you fat, and you say, "Yeah, you're right," and walk away. And that's how you can potentially keep that bully or that person, you know, from teasing you further if you're showing them that it doesn't affect you. So we had some time to practice these skills and, you know, reinforcing between all the different staff. And we saw that, you know, the reports and the concerns from students were continuing. And I actually spoke about this at the meeting that I had, you know, with the SAU DEIJ committee leaders and, you know, just talking about how we've been working through this. And there were some staff from the high school that shared how they've been working with their students about microaggressions. And when they explained it to me more, I was like, I think this is what we're actually dealing with here. It's these little subtle comments that, or behaviors, that are specific about who somebody is. And that's how I framed it to the fifth graders. So on the next slide, our next upcoming lesson was actually really fitting from Second Step. It was about handling put-downs. And so as we went through that lesson, I introduced that concept of microaggressions to them. And we had an opportunity just yesterday to talk more, again, kind of tossing aside the script of Second Step and just talking about what are microaggressions, what are some examples, age appropriate, of course, and, you know, how can we address them when they come up to us? So the next slide, I gave them, I gave each group different examples of microaggressions. So assuming that someone should be interested in something based on their gender, wouldn't you rather play with dolls? How do you not like sports? These were things that we were hearing students come and report to us. And the next one, comments or reactions about how someone, how capable someone is. You're not as fast, so I think you should play in this position over here, or let me do that. You don't know how to do it. Or things like making a face, laughing, not including somebody. And the next one, speaking differently or treating someone differently because they're at a different academic level or they think speaker here differently. So these were things that I had either seen or heard about in fifth grade or just, you know, general examples that I wanted these fifth graders to discuss. So in the next slide, the three questions that they were given were, have you seen, heard, or done these things before? What was the underlying message of those microaggressions? And then what could have been said or done differently in those situations? And for many of them, understandably, this was a new concept. They had a hard time reframing it. And it was a great opportunity for us to talk about how our intentions with our words might not be received in the same way. So if we make a mistake, or if you're the victim of a microaggression, you should talk to that person and say, this is how it made me feel. This is how I received it. Was that your intention? So we talked a lot about the skill of being assertive, and that's one of the Second Step concepts. And it's K-5, you know, being assertive is standing up for yourself, being respectful when you're doing it, and asking for something that you need or want. So it was a great discussion, and I even shared just a personal experience with myself. I mistreated a student just by speaking to them differently and didn't realize it until I walked away from the situation. So we all make mistakes. So it's those opportunities to recognize them, to apologize, or, you know, just do something differently next time. So I had the students reflect on what they learned about microaggressions, and I got some really great, really great responses that I wanted to share. So the student, I learned that microaggressions are a way that you speak to someone or treat them differently because they're different from you. That even if you don't mean it, it could be doing something hurtful to someone. I learned that when people insult other people, but they don't try to, it's a microaggression. For example, if you say something like, "You're smart for your age," but the underlying message is, compared to me, it's not always meant to be mean, and apologizing doesn't always help. We talked a lot about that, that it's so important to think about your words before you say them. Think about what you're going to do before you do it, because the damage could still happen. These subtle things that happen, you know, day to day, can still have a lasting impact. And that's why the real definition of a microaggression is subtle, but over and over and over with time, it has a significant way on people. There are little comments about someone being mean, or teasing, saying anything like, you can't play with that. Tell them the meaning of this. Even some little comment or act could hurt someone's feelings and make them think you don't like them, make them think that they can't do something as good as you, and make them think that.
And there are something wrong.
There you go.
Can you see it now? Sorry, it's any time.
That's okay. And so the next question that I have them reflect is why do we practice the skill of being assertive? Why is it important? So if someone is bullying you, you can stand up for yourself or for someone else. And in the future, if someone is being mean to you, you can tell them that it hurt you. So we can reduce microaggressions, and so people can learn that. So because of the fact that microaggressions, that one small thing, may become an insult, we learn to stand up for ourselves and others can learn to stand up. And most people can learn to, learn to stand up for themselves. Being assertive helps in these situations. Standing up for yourself, and we talked about that when you're being assertive, it's when you're in the classroom, you're outside of school, you're at home, you're talking to an adult, you're talking to a parent, asking for things and, you know, getting what you need, but still remaining respectful when you're doing it. I loved that they really reflected on how this is a skill we talked about. You know, this is something that you're not going to just use now. You're going to use it when you're in middle school and high school and your whole life, and it's a really important skill as an adult. And it can help us not take things so personally. If we're, you know, being upfront and saying, is this what you meant by it? Then it can, you know, justify that, consider something. And my students love the skill of calming down. It's a wonderful song, which I'll play a clip for you guys. Stop, make your feeling calm down. Apologies, it'll get stuck in your head. But it actually, it does its job. Kids are remembering those steps. And believe it or not, I hear those fifth graders at recess in the hallway singing that song. They might be, you know, being silly about it, but they remember, so. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. That was awesome. Yeah, I just wanted to get it out there. We want to make sure every kid or adult who are visiting or is in our building is welcome, is included, living their very own business school. And it's one of those things that Tom and Larry saw that last week, it was so special. Everyone loves our ability. They treat like a kingfisher. Again, thank you very much for putting together and look forward to next month. We'll have Mrs. Norman and Mr. Davis, the TCU teachers, here presenting on some of our classroom assignments.
All right. Before we go into Chair's report, is there any public comment that anybody would like?
Just wondering what the SEL was after DEIJ was?
Oh, social emotional learning, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep.
Paige, I just had, just had a couple of questions. So you're going to ask the SEL Second Step for a month twice a month. And how long is that instructional period?
It's about 30 minutes.
30 minutes?
Yeah.
And then also is CMF, you're in Second Step, does that Sel upgrade to you, Bill?
I don't believe so. I'm not sure what that means.
No, we don't, they, it goes up to a grade, and they have more tiered depending, so no.
Okay. Do you have those Second Step for doing a lot of, Paige, so parents are using the top bits covered at each level?
It is, yeah. And every start of the school year, I send a letter home to families, giving them access code. um, giving them access code, so that they can log in and they can look at the curriculum themselves. Um, and nearly every lesson as well, there's, uh, what we call homework. So, um, the students can take what they learned home, and there's also an activity, and they can do some extra practice with someone.
Oh, great, can I answer question number four?
All right, um, so for the chair report, basically, I've got two things. We need to do our committee assignments, and then goal updates, and we should, uh, do reassignments on those as well. So, uh, first part is, if you had a chance to take a look and see what you might wanna do. Okay. There you go.
Which one are we working on the goals?
Some of those.
Okay. So, um, the committees that I looked at or asked about with the wellness committee, and then safety is pretty. Um, but my que, one of my biggest questions was when those meetings were held. Um, and so it's ending up that the wellness committee seems to be a more fitting space for me. Um, and actually aligns to a lot of stuff that I do in my employment work. So, um, the wellness committee is, I had, I was trying.
All right. So, I said, do you do wellness? You want to say I'll take this for you?
Um, I don't mind.
Yeah, you got that policy, you'll take superintendent and stay with the interview?
That was my second question, can we have more than one committee?
Yes.
So can I have two, or all seven?
And then there's the SAU sixteen joint board communications and community engagement committee, which I was on, and we had one meeting, and we're gonna, I'm gonna report that on that, but we're gonna meet again next semester. So that was communications and community engagement. We have a whole SAU sixteen joint board.
Do you want me to take that over to the superintendent's chair?
Yeah. I think I'd like to, I guess, stay with the five policies. And then you can take safety and security.
Yep.
And then obviously, one of us can't be there.
So on administrative, though, can we have this list updated to include?
SAU sixteen joint board communications and community engagement committee.
So, no, and I, I just wanna help answer your previous question. The communications and community engagement committee is, um, hasn't been added to this yet. It's a new committee at the SAU level.
Okay, so that's.
Yes, but it'll be on the next agenda, so we've added it, there'll be a report out. After the, so that's a great question, thank you.
Uh, we met, so I'll be reporting today.
Awesome.
Okay, so now that we have those, um, I've got nothing for superintendent evaluation. Don't believe that committee is certified?
It is not. I'll be providing an update, uh, next Monday evening on, uh, superintendent goals, uh, progress, which are predominantly around transition. Uh, and then I suspect we'll be evaluating committee shortly, maybe shortly after.
Okay.
And the evaluation should be placed next month.
Right. So, policy, you have enough to do the following?
Yes.
So, policies up for approval tonight are IHAM, Health Education and Exemption from Instruction. This is a new policy, and this policy is required, uh, and provides requirement in the content of health instructional programs. In addition, this policy outlines the notification requirements in opt-out process for parents guardians, should they not want their child to participate in the instruction. Policy IHAMA is teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco. So this policy is required, and it covers several RSAs. One of them is that it requires the district to provide comprehensive list of local and regional statewide drug and alcohol counseling and treatment programs available to the district students in the student handbooks. Policy IJL is selection and adoption of library materials. So this is an optional policy, not required. So our library media specialists receive inquiries from the public regarding how the library collection is selected and reviewed. This policy provides that information in a consistent manner and outlines resources that are used by the staff. Just wanted to go a little bit further into that. So as a team, the SAU librarians met with Chris and Druski to work in, on and put together this policy, and it aligns with KEC, policy KEC, policy K E C R one and K E C R two. And one thing that I'd like to note about this policy is that it talks about the appropriateness for the age and emotional development of the intended audience when selecting library materials. Policy IMEH is daily physical activity. It's a new policy, and it's required, uh, it's a required policy. And the text of the policy mirrors what is outlined in regulations. And please note that this policy does not require all of the practices to be accomplished inside the school day, but rather that the board district recommend the practices to students and families. And then IMBA is distance education. This is a new policy as well. And this policy is required for any district that intends to offer distance education, either for snow days or individual students. This includes remote learning days. The policy also outlines the considerations needed in an individualized distance education program, as well as the rights and responsibilities regarding students not making educational progress. So it's a brief overview. So I didn't know if you had any questions regarding those policies.
Any questions?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised policies IHAM, IHAMA, IJL, IMAH, IMEA.
Uh, I'll second the motion, but just note that, um, there are new policies.
Want to?
Hi.
All right, so, how we got goal updates? Um, Tiffany, you got anything on yours?
Uh, I won't have anything until after the assessments are finished.
Okay. Um, same thing with mine, nothing new to report. Um, so, really, and then, uh, the four, which was hiring the new superintendent, that's been essentially accomplished.
Yes, I asked the college, we'll remove that from the May agenda, so you won't see that reappear.
So we've got three, three goals as a board that, that we, uh, would like to kind of continue to go with, um, public discussion with re, uh, with regards to essentially reporting on academic growth. Tiffany, you've been doing that, you wanna stay with that?
I mean, I guess, um, I'd like to defer to Kirsten to see what she wants to do first. It's not, it's not, oh, there it is.
Yeah. It's fine.
I, I appreciate the hospitality. Um, I'm mostly, I guess I have questions more than I have answers, um, if that's okay. So, um, in the public discussion with administration over the academic growth and learning, is that only through statewide and national assessments that you're looking at? Are you looking at some sort of assessments and assessments that go on within the school to report out? So it's a combination of both?
Yeah, all of them.
Combination.
Okay. Um, secondly, um, on the second goal, um, engaging members in the East Kingston community through communication, events, and outreach, um, are, is that when you work with people within the school community to do those outreach pieces? So you're actually communicating with one another on a constant basis? Or is that considered a quorum also, when you have those pieces of information? For example, I'm just asking, like, if I am on this committee and I'm speaking to Principal French, is that considered a quorum because we're working on the goal towards that space?
No, it would only be a quorum if two of the three board members are present and discussing school business. Um, so, thinking through that, on the committee level, if you're going to one, if the two of you wouldn't be present, you'd wanna, um, one of you would have to either be absent or not participate in that discussion.
Right, so that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and then the third, um, I am not privy to, or just being new, about the five-year capital improvement plan, so I just wanted more information on that. My understanding is that it's a priority of deciding how we're going to use the capital funds for the building and safety of the school.
Yes.
Okay.
I will share.
Okay.
Basically.
And.
Make sure maintenance.
And is Principal French part of that conversation also, so that we're all in communication about that?
Yes.
Yes.
And are there, um, community members on that board, on that committee to give input? Or is it just?
No, this isn't necessarily, uh, a plan to expend funds. It's the plan to identify all of the capital needs and to organize them according to priority. So if we were gonna expend funds for these projects, um, these would be brought to the board, and the public would have an opportunity to weigh in, the public input, or any other needs that we provide for communication.
So that's the after.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is more about what's our building, what, what do we need to fix, what's it cost? Is it a security issue, is there another priority level? So I'm gonna share another view right now.
So with that, I'm open to conversation. I just wanted to really know more specifically each of the goals and what their purposes were. Um, I'm happy to be on any one of those.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Do you have a part? Keep that to me. I forget, especially because I don't have to. Reporting has been your thing?
Do you have a reference?
I, I would, I would like to. I would like to be, I'd like to do the capital.
Okay, so that's off the table.
So.
Okay.
Old move, come.
So if I had, if, if you're handing this mic to me, Tiffany, um, I would like to be engaged, um, with the community members and not that many East Kingston community.
That actually fits very well with you being on the, the policy, with the policy committee for that.
Correct, yes.
Perfect.
All right. Okay, so on, can we move on to old business? Brandon, the, um, what you emailed me about for the, um, the superintendent email. Make a quick note about that. There wasn't, basically, it wasn't much of an email.
Okay.
That was a quick answer. So, there's a superintendent email that, that runs out of schools.
Oh, yes, yes, okay.
So.
Yeah, just a follow-up on that too, is, uh, when I was on the website today, I noticed Twitter, and I noticed that you post a bunch of good stuff on there, but not everyone has Twitter. So I was wondering, like, how many, is it followers, do you have on Twitter?
Oh, I'd have to look at, I don't know, I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just thinking.
Are you trying there?
I'm just trying to see where, where it's followers. But I guess what I'm saying, you know, is, does everyone in our community know that we're on Twitter?
Uh, I mean, weekly.
Maybe we could put it into, like, the weekly, or like the Kingfisher Chronicle?
Yeah, it's, it's been in the weekly multiple times.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, yeah, the Kingfisher Chronicle, like, because that goes out to the community, I could definitely get it in there.
Okay, yeah, 'cause there's some great stuff on there. I saw a picture of, uh, Mrs. Hockmaster on there today, and she was a kid, and she went to school there.
Yeah.
Um, anyone who has seen it, it's cute.
All right.
Is, is the superintendent email, you referring to superintendent update that we send each month?
Yeah.
Okay, where we collect information following our schools, yes.
All right, on old business, uh, we had the buildings and ground safety policy.
So, uh, policy ECA, the board had asked for, uh, a correction or an adjustment to this after we had talked about liability, and did we need to have a paid staff member here to let folks in and out of the lockup after, and we clarified, no, we did not. And it's funny, the other small communities, the other small school boards asked for the same draft, so it was, it was pretty simple to, uh, make this edit. We switched the fifth bullet, as you can see, anything in red is new, so member of the school or community group has struck personnel. So, and if you're here with a basketball team, you can open up, and you can lock up, and we're still covered by liability. And we struck, school district employee must be on school grounds. That was the essence of what the board had asked us to fix for this policy, as the other two small board said, so we would resubmit this back for approval.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll go back through the policy committee?
No, that one's right here. This is your request for an edit.
Okay, so we can vote on it, is that?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
And then IHBAB was, there was some confusion because of the, um, short, shortened version, the summary where it said it was new, uh, or it said Kensington only. That was because it was new to Kensington only, but it was just a revision for our community. But there was a little confusion, not only board members read it because they saw it was Kensington only. So, we were asked to keep it for this month, um, so we have it back on the agenda for approval this month.
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to.
So on verbiage, it says by authorized, and that should say by and authorized, I believe.
Oh, are you, I'm sorry, which policy?
On policy ECA, I'm sorry.
ECA, thank you.
Just before the changes that would be made to the policy.
Correct, Amanda.
Okay.
Got it, thank you.
And then on the IHBAB, uh, there's an edit on the second page, all the way down. The district's in SAU sixteen, the hashtag needs to be removed.
Where did you see?
So, um, Paige, let's do.
Oh, got it.
Yeah.
Done.
Okay, can we approve as?
As amended, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve policy ECA and IHBAB as amended.
I'll second.
Favor? Aye. Any more new business?
None from the debate.
Reason can on public.
Not the secret.
I was just hoping to report out on the committees.
Oh, did we skip them?
I think somehow that jumped it.
Policy, oh, we didn't do safety and security, did you meet safety and security?
Uh, so safety and security, we did not meet. That meeting is not to speak on the twentieth.
Correct. You mean engagement has not met? And SAU sixteen, Wallace?
Um, so the wellness committee met, and, uh, they updated us on the key collective, hashtag R U N, and how it helps families within the fabric of SAU sixteen. And I did refresh myself, but basically, it's somebody in East Kingston started this charitable organization, and I believe that it helps the, uh, youth center district. and I believe that it helps the youth in our district be able, to be able to sign up for supports. So a lot of times, like, if they're signing up for, you know, there's certain things that are included, it will just already say, like, are you in, and then just click on that and it's getting there.
Yes.
And then we reviewed the SAU sixteen wellness inventory survey that went out to all the building principals. We got some good information there. It talked about the amount of physical activity that our students have, and how much time they spend outdoors. And then, so right now, we're in the process of reviewing the wellness policy. So the next committee meeting is on the twentieth of April at three o'clock, and there is a Google meets option for that. And then I guess I'll just go right into the SAU sixteen joint board communications and community engagement committee. So we had discussions around identifying opportunities for growth and improved communications. The objective of the group is to support SAU sixteen in integrating communications and community engagement as a priority in upcoming strategic planning process. And our goals are to identify current processes, protocols, and responsibility for communications across SAU sixteen, and to identify opportunities for improved communication, and to gather input from stakeholders. And that meeting, that committee will meet again in September. And I brought you notes, like, more in-depth notes of the meeting.
Thank you. Got anything else?
No, sir, not for the good of the order.
Aye. We will call vote to end or just?
Motion to adjourn, someone makes it.
Motion to adjourn? Call the meeting, close at four fifty-nine PM, bye-bye.